Good evening. The League of Women Voters, Metro North Chamber of Commerce, North Suburbans Optimists, all welcome you to this forum to meet the candidates for candidates running for the Blaine City Council Ward 1. Thanks to the candidates, the Blaine City Hall, and Metro North TV for making this event possible. This year, we're holding, the League of Women Voters is holding all of our forums without an audience to avoid COVID-19 spread. I'm Jerry Nelson, co-chair of Voter Service for the League of Women Voters ABC. I live in Champlin, so I can't vote for either of these candidates. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any candidate or political party. I'm sure these candidates care very much who you vote for, but the League of Women Voters does not. We hope that each of you will vote, and the goal of our forums is to help you to become an informed voter. The candidates for Ward 1 in Blaine are Jason Smith and Tom Newland. We will begin with three questions that we gave the candidates beforehand, and this will be followed by questions that came to us online. The candidates will alternate who speaks first, and the answers are limited to one minute. So, the first question, we'll give, these three questions will just give you a background on what these candidates are all about. So, Tom Sanders, nope, I better get this off of here. Jason Smith, describe your background in community involvement.
Sure. I'm Jason Smith. I've lived in Blaine for 17 years. For just over that, I've worked at Boston Scientific. My community involvement is, I'm involved with various charities, including Steffingsstone. And then, at work, I started the Men as Allies portion of the Women's Network to work towards gender equality. Been a long supporter of SLV Sports since I'm in the Spring Lake Park School District, and I'm involved with my neighborhood. I live right around here in the sanctuary, and I've got a close involvement with all my neighbors.
Thank you. Tom Newland, describe your background in community involvement.
Thank you. I've lived in the area for over 40 years now, about a third of that here in Blaine. I've been involved in a number of different organizations, not only here in Blaine, but before I got into Blaine. I was a founding member of the Blaine Public Safety Association. I was involved in the park board for six years, two, three-year terms. I spent six years on the Board of Directors of the SPM Fire Department, three of those as president of the board. I was one of the founders of the Blaine Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Commission, and I was a founding member educationally of the Spring Lake Park School District Foundation, the Panther Foundation. I've been a business owner for 27 years, and look forward to getting involved in continuing involvement in the city.
Thank you. Tom Newland, what are your qualifications for serving as Blaine City Council member, and why are you seeking this office?
Sure. And as I mentioned, my involvement within the city is quite deep. I had interest in getting involved when I moved my business to Blaine, and I became a resident of Blaine. Getting involved with Chamber of Commerce precedes living here, and I was, and I still am, a member of the Chamber. I served on the board there and was chairman of the board. But involvement within the Public Safety Association was a lot of fun. It felt like something I wanted to do and I needed to do. The primary focus was funding the K-9 unit for the police department. Getting involved in the fire department was just a blast. I mean, meeting some of the people and working with one of the core services of the city, which is the fire department, was huge. And involvement with the park board was a lot of fun. So, this is just a continuation of the same thing, and it's been an honor to serve the city in a variety of different capacities, and I would hope to continue to do so.
Thank you. Jason Smith, what are your qualifications for serving as Blaine City Council member, and why are you seeking this office?
Sure. I've worked at Boston Scientific for 18 years, and I spend a lot of time solving business and technical problems, and I'd like to apply that problem-solving to here. I have my master's degree in business administration. I can leverage the knowledge about finance and accounting to help the city manage their budget. I have no political affiliation. My involvement in the city is about the residents. I was attracted to run two years ago, and I wasn't successful, so here I am again. But it's really about the residents. Blaine City Council is your conduit to the city. We're the only people that you elect in the city, and we're here to represent you and your interests in the city.
Thank you. Third question here, Jason Smith, you'll start. What are your short and long-term goals for Blaine?
Sure. My short-term goals, one of the big ones is transparency and accountability. I'd like to make the city as accessible as can be, so that everyone feels welcome here, and that they can get engaged in the city, and not a one-way relationship of where people can come here and learn things, but the city is doing active outreach to all residents and all communities. Communities and neighborhoods are what make Blaine a great city, but it'd be great to join all those people together and make them feel a part of the city in all of the neighborhoods. Another short-term goal is having the money to reinvest in neighborhoods. I know that in our ward that sometimes they feel left behind. It's the older neighborhoods that are, the traffic and the roads feel a little bit further behind. Long-term goal is reduce financial dependence on residents. Right now, Blaine's finances are dictated on property taxes only, and I'd like to find additional ways to increase revenue.
Thank you. Tom Newland, what are your short and long-term goals for Blaine?
Well, the short-term goal is easy because it's working, well, not easy, but it's easy to define it. That's working through the COVID-19 impacts on the government budget, the city budget, for the next, probably the majority of the next four years. It'll be felt big time next year, and probably have a ripple effect for quite some time, and try to work through that with good decisions, and not try to do everything based on the back and wallet of the taxpayer. How we do that, I don't know. There's some challenges ahead of us, which is where experience and background play in, looking at what the city can continue to do to offer services to residents, and try to work through it as best we can. Long-term goal can stay the course. I think the city has done an outstanding job of getting to where it is. There is indeed for overhaul of everything happening. It's a matter of continuing to work forward to a great future.
Thank you. First question from our website. City Council's chief responsibility is to set strategies for the city. What strategic initiatives would you push for, Tom Newland?
Like I said, working through the COVID-19 crisis is, it's huge. That will impact all of us, as it already has. And property values, I think, are going to change. There's people that do not have jobs yet. There's people living on fixed incomes, and to work through this so we all can get ahead is going to involve a lot of key people. There's a lot of key people here in Blaine with great experience and great knowledge, and we're losing two key people on the city council with the combined 60 years of experience. And having been involved in this area for quite some time, I can bring some of that to the table. I can't replace that amount of time that they've served, but to work together, to collaborate. It's no one person that's going to solve any given problem. It's all of us working collectively with the input of citizens, residents, staff, and other cities to see what we can do.
Thank you. Jason Smith, the city council's chief responsibility is to set strategies for the city. What strategic initiatives would you push for?
Things I would push for are looking a bit beyond COVID. That is the near-term reality that we have to deal with, but the city needs to realize where do they want to be in 20, 30 years, and start setting goals on how to achieve that. What does it want to look like? The city has grown, had tremendous growth for a number of years, but that spare land is starting to fill up, and so the runway of how can we use that land wisely, and what types of businesses do we want here, and how do we redevelop? I believe that is a long-term issue that needs to be solved.
Thank you. This voter is saying, "I see a lot of noncompliance with the recommendations for slowing the spread of COVID-19 in Blaine. How would you encourage Blaine residents to help each other stay healthy?" Jason Smith, you're first.
Yes, I would encourage people just to follow the guidelines. There's good guidelines from the state and from various scientists in the CDC saying how you can slow the spread of COVID, ensuring that people understand the why to do these things and how it benefits everyone. And reinforcing that communication from the city as well would help encourage people, and by setting a good example, like they have with the way city councils run, and ensuring that it's done in a safe way, sets a good example of how things can be, continue to move on and be done safely.
Thank you. Tom Newland, this person sees a lot of noncompliance with the recommendations for slowing the spread of COVID-19 in Blaine. How would you encourage Blaine residents to help each other stay healthy?
I guess I don't see a lot of noncompliance. I see the masks continuing to spread. I think it's a bad word, spread, but they're continuing to get used. I no longer get very often to the front door of a business without having my mask, and that took a while to get there. Hand sanitizers are great things that I've used for quite some time. I think a lot of these practices that we are implementing now will continue for quite some time as well. But for the city to show leadership through the partitions and other things here, and continue to do that as they carry activities through the community, is setting a great example.
Thank you. Okay, let's get into some business question here. Actually, there are two of them. Tom Newland, you'll start. If elected, what would you do to promote a healthy business climate? And related to that, please describe any experiences you have owning or managing a business, as well as specific advocacy efforts on behalf of the local small business community.
In 60 seconds or less. Business ownership, I've had for 27 years. I've been quite involved with the Metro North Chamber of Commerce for two decades now. I served on the board of the Chamber, as I said, with the term as chairman of the board. So, the leadership and experience that I have there is a given. Business-wise, I was one of the co-founders of the Blaine Business Council, and early on, one of the topics that kept popping up was getting a luxury grocery store, some choice other than the ones that we have. And I made a phone call to a grocery store, Kowalski's, and we had, Rob Kowalski showed up at one of our business council meetings to talk about what he looked for, and to me, that's just taking an initiative. It's making an easy phone call. If the topic pops up, reach out to people. But the city's EDA and the planning department, they are the ones that really make, where the rubber meets the road, and make things happen for sharing the story of Blaine.
Thank you. Jason Smith, if elected, what would you do to provide a healthy business climate, and describe any experiences you have owning or managing a business, as well as specific advocacy efforts on behalf of the local small business community?
Yes. To improve the business climate, I would ensure that we support the businesses here, what they're doing with the relief fund from the CARES Act, to ensure that small businesses here are supported through this effort. Goes a long way to supporting those businesses. To attract local businesses, I think city council, while the EDA has a primary responsibility, they can be an advocate for why people enjoy living in Blaine and why businesses can be attracted to Blaine. I think ensuring that you make it easy to work with the city to build a business here and continue business here helps encourage additional businesses, because there's the Chamber of Commerce and other things, they talk to each other, and beyond the city, they know where it's good to do business. So, being a good business partner in the city helps ensure that you attract businesses long-term.
Okay. Jason Smith, this voter sees a lot of diversity in my neighborhood, but not in city government. The Census Bureau estimates that Blaine is about 20% diverse at this time, and that number is expected to grow. Research shows that economic growth improves with greater racial inclusion and smaller racial income gaps. Considering recent events, how would you address racism in Blaine and make all citizens feel valued and included? There's another question. Could we go two minutes on this, because there's a whole bunch, several things came in on race, so I want to add this one in too. So, how would you address racism in Blaine and make all citizens feel included and valued? And what are your thoughts on how the city can address barriers to racial equity in Blaine?
Sure. I think what the city can do to make everybody feel welcome will go a long way. Just being available is a one relationship, and the people that already feel like they can engage with the city will and have. I think it's going to require active, dedicated effort with public safety and others to go and reach out to neighborhoods and reach people where they are, and find the neighborhood associations where everybody can engage with the city, and you get to have those conversations and find out what they're looking for, and ensure they're engaged in the city, and they understand the services available, and how they can access what is available within the city. The second part of the question was...
What are your thoughts on how the city can address barriers to racial equity in Blaine?
Racial equity in Blaine? We can just make sure that everybody has access to the same resources, and that you're reaching people where they are. I think Blaine's diverse housing stock of a variety of price points and helps get people into the neighborhood, and Blaine has worked hard. You've got everything from manufactured homes to much more expensive homes, and that ensures that people have access to housing within the city, and that the city stays diverse and has a good cross-section of people.
Okay, thank you. Tom Newland, the voter sees a lot of diversity in my neighborhood, but not in city government. That's a piece that isn't really in the question, so that's another piece you can talk about. The Census Bureau estimates that Blaine is about 20% diverse at this time, and that number is expected to grow. Research shows that economic growth improves with greater racial inclusion and smaller racial income gaps. How would you address racism in Blaine and make all citizens feel included and valued? And what are your thoughts on how the city can address barriers to racial equity in Blaine?
When I was on the park board, one of the things that we added was an event called World Fest, that brought in ethnicities, food, different entertainment from all across the globe, and it was focused right here in City Hall. And that was meant to open the doors, to allow citizens to experience other cultures, other foods, other people, other background, people that were a little bit different than them that still lived here. And that was a great start. I was proud to be a sponsor of it when the program got going. Night to Unite is another outstanding event that brings your neighbors together, and that was the first event when I moved in, probably two months after I moved in, that I had the opportunity to meet all my neighbors, and I was equally as impressed with what the questioner had asked about the diversity you see within the city, within my own street, within our own neighborhoods. Within the city, the diversity we've started to see. I know that the police department has expanded, some of the officers that are coming in are not your typical white males. There's different people that are now representing the police department out in the community. And the police department is probably the most visible government entity that's out there. And I saw the video the chief did with a number of his officers addressing racism, talking about, talking about what the police department does, and what their mission, and what their focus is. I thought it was very timely. It was very well done. A lot of the other challenges that we might be seeing are going to be there. I mean, it's a matter of bringing people an opportunity to get together, an opportunity to talk to one another, to learn about each other, and to see how we can work through things together.
Thank you. Currently, local residents experience long delays crossing Highway 65 to reach the stores on the other side. What initiative would you support to improve convenience on Highway 65 that would balance the needs of local residents who need to cross Highway 65 for shopping, and those driving through? Tom Newland, you're first.
It's a question and a challenge that's been going on since as long as I can remember in Blaine. It's being addressed with some studies that have been taking place, and it seems like some of the suggestions, recommendations might be real, and to have that at least a part of the conversation at the state level, have the county involved to help bring some solutions together. I saw some of the initial recommendations that came out that are quite varied. In Ward 1, there was one proposal to put a bridge over 87th and 65 and close off 85th Street, making some at the cross street there, and making some right in, right out. At least we're talking about different proposals that may or may not come together. That's one I would hope does not come together, but to look at everything that's on the table and see what we might be able to address in as timely a manner as possible, and it's going to take some time.
Thank you. Jason Smith, currently, local residents experience long delays crossing Highway 65 to reach the stores on the other side. What initiative do you support to improve convenience on Highway 65 that would balance the needs of local residents who need to cross Highway 65 for shopping, and those driving through?
Sure. The first thing I would encourage people to do is, they just released the proposal for 65, and they're asking for community involvement. They have three options on there of various states of change on 65. They're asking for everybody's involvement in those options, and I certainly encourage people to take a look at those and consider what those options would mean to not only what Blaine has to put in, but the involvement needed from everybody. Blaine can't afford this by themselves by a long stretch. They don't control that road. That's going to require county and state involvement. I think there's some good proposals, and they do a good job of breaking down the criteria which they were considering, and allow you to make input on all the different things, and what you do and don't like about it. They make very clear that you can mix and match different aspects of the proposal. So, the best way to get involved is to make your voice heard on that, and then help advocate at the state and even federal level, because ultimately, it's going to take money to get this all fixed.
That was a perfect segue into the next question. Currently, local residents experience, oops, that was five, this is six. In the past, when a major project is proposed, citizens most impacted were not invited to a meeting to ascertain their opinions until the project was so far along, the meeting was really to tell people what would be done. How would you get, how would you work to get citizen opinions early in the process? And that will be, did you answer that other one?
I did.
Okay, so, Jason, you're first.
Okay. So, the one would be to make sure that you get access to that. I'm sure it's coming, but the city should be pushing out the state proposal of the various fixes to ensure that everybody can be involved. If it's signed up early, you got to push these messages right away. But to keep pushing out that message, that for, there is room for community involvement. They're actively asking people, hey, give us your opinions. You know, I took the time and looked at the different proposals and said, hey, here's what I like about this. I think you're maybe putting too much weight on this. And they're actively trying to collect that feedback and collate it into a final recommendation of what can go forward.
Okay. Tom Newland, in the past, when a major project is proposed, the citizens most impacted were not invited to a meeting to ascertain their opinions until the project was so far along, the meeting was really to tell people what would be done. How would you work to get citizen opinions early in the process?
The public is always invited to meetings. It's a matter of being plugged in at the early stages. Things go through the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission does a fantastic job of vetting various topics, and making sure that people in the area are aware of the fact that they are invited, that they can participate. How you do that, beyond what the city has already been doing, through newsletters, through the website, through mail links that focus on the immediate property owners. There's no way to hit everybody, because not everybody looks at everything. But the City Hall is always open, and to ensure that everyone is aware of the opportunity. The city council listens just as well. There's always an open mic that's here, and to encourage anyone with interest to take an issue, pick up the phone, show up, ask some questions. But, and the city does listen. They do listen.
Thank you. Here's one that has to deal with a mess. What would you do to deal with junk cars, boats, campers, et cetera, parked in the main roads, and junk piled up in driveways and yards in the neighborhoods, especially on the old side of Blaine? Tom Newland.
I have a property next to me on 65 that has been sold over a year ago, and there's piles of garbage that have started to accumulate. The weeds are one thing, I can live with that. The garbage, it forced me to call City Hall, and it was taken care of almost immediately. If there's an issue that you see, if there's something that doesn't seem right, you can make a phone call. Phone calls cost nothing, a little bit of time, and the city can give input and feedback as to what can be done. Having a city official look at it, you can submit pictures, which is what I did, and make it easy for the city to react. But making the violators, so to speak, aware of what they need to do is the first step. We don't need to come down hard on people immediately. Let's work with them over time.
Thank you. Jason Smith, what would you do to deal with junk cars, boats, and campers, et cetera, parked in the main roads, and junk piled up in driveways and yards in neighborhoods, especially on the old side of Blaine?
I agree with Tom. If you reach out to the city, Blaine has a great code enforcement group that does a good job of enforcing all of the different zoning regulations, and if people reach out and have complaints about neighbors or things like that, or things they've seen that don't meet code in Blaine, you can reach out and work with the city. And the city, on the other hand, is great about engaging with people and not, you know, hitting them with a fine or something that's going to create a contentious atmosphere. They work with people towards solutions. You know, as things come up at city council about, you know, adding a shed or something like that, the city usually works pretty hard with people to try to find a workable solution, because that gets the stuff off of people's, you know, yards and lawns into an organized area, and I would encourage that to continue.
Thank you. Jason Smith, what do you see as the greatest need or challenge for youth in Blaine? And how would you, as an elected official, help solve this issue?
Sure. For the youth in Blaine, I think Blaine has, one of their biggest assets is the National Sports Center. To engage more youth in Blaine, I would encourage Blaine to more closely partner with the National Sports Center to create activities. There seems to be a great synergy with what you're doing in the Parks Department and Board, to start to utilize the sports center and all the amenities they have to create more opportunities for kids. Another thing would be to improve some of the parks, some of the parks have fallen in disrepair, and the budget long-term is difficult for parks. Creating an environment that kids want to go there and play, and opportunities for involvement for those kids, so a more active approach from the city on engaging youth.
Thank you. Tom Newland, what do you see as the greatest need or challenge for youth in Blaine, and how would you, as an elected official, help solve the issue?
Thank you. The Park Department already has a number of outstanding programs specifically targeted to youth at every age level, and helping push that message out there through the schools, primarily, to allow them to share the resources, the activities happening within the city, needs to continue. Partnering with schools on what the schools see, shared resources may or may not work, but adapting what we already have and what's already working to the means by which we can get the message out there is something that we can't do enough of. Working with the National Sports Center and helping promote the activities there, it's such a large complex. Sometimes, you might not know where to start, and helping define where do we start, and where does somebody start? And helping define where do we start and where does somebody start, working with the National Sports Center and getting involved would be great.
Thank you. Last question before closing statements. How would you handle a disagreement with city staff? Tom Newland, you're first.
I had a great disagreement with city staff when I bought my building because my sign was not in compliance with then code. And my answer was to ignore the city person that kept talking about it until I couldn't ignore it anymore. And my solution was to adapt with a plan to bring the sign into compliance. The city did a very good job of pointing out what I needed to do. I was on the Highway 65 overlay, or the, yeah, the overlay plan, so it needed to look a certain way. I didn't have the resources to do what I wanted to do or what they wanted me to do, so I did an expensive solution that worked out fantastic and it's still there 16 years later. So you start with the conversation and it, it can bring some positive results as long as you approach it reasonably and you have reasonable solutions, it'll, it'll work out.
Thank you. Jason Smith, how would you handle a disagreement with city staff?
I think it starts with mutual respect and agreement that we're both trying to work towards a, a workable solution. Having staff understand that we're, staff is in service to the community where, you know, the city is really a customer service organization, you know, the city works for the residents. Resolving an issue with staff is, do like you're doing many things, is listen and trying to understand their perspective and where they're coming from and work towards a, a common solution that can fulfill what the obligations of the city are along with what, you know, I'm trying to push for if it's coming to a disagreement.
Thank you. So we'll move now to one-minute closing statements and Jason Smith, you'll be first.
Sure. Just to start off by saying, I'm not a politician. I've got no reason to try and push for any specific perspective in the city. I'm excited to do this and I ran two years ago and I learned a lot and I met a lot of great people, which is what led me to run again. I like engaging with resident, residents, like going out and seeing where they are and being accessible to them, making sure that their voice carries into the city and not, not being a, a passive listener, but actively going out and listening. I think that's a great part about city government. It's nonpartisan, which I appreciate that you're working towards a common solution, a long-term goal of making the city the best it can be. If people want to reach out, I'm readily available on any social media or website. The legal voters have a good informational area on voter 411 if you want to find more, more out about me.
Thank you. Tom Newland, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. City government is the most approachable form of government we have. It's very easy to get to know who your council member is, to get to talk to him. You pick up the phone, you come to a meeting and the residents expect accountability and that accountability they are entitled to. My background with what I've been involved with in business, in the community and government, in education, gives me a very broad base to make decisions to help people find solutions. And that's what the city council is all about, is working towards solutions. There's some problems that exist, but there's also some long-term challenges to solve some of the more systemic ingrained problems and I believe I can be a part of that. So given the opportunity, it would be an honor to serve on the city council.
Thank you, Jason Smith and Tom Newland for your, for speaking to voters about the issues and for running for Blaine City Council Ward 1. Thank you to all of you watching for your interest in becoming informed voters. You will find links to all the candidate forums on the LWV ABC website as we move through this election season. You have many ways to vote this year. You can request an absentee ballot now on the Secretary of State's website, amantvotes.org, or go to Mary Ann Young Center at 9150 Central Avenue to vote anytime after September 18th. The hours there will be 8:00 AM to 4:30, except on the last two days, Saturday and Monday before election. Check the, the times on those days. If you need to register to vote or to update your registration, you can do that online or when you go to vote. Make your voice heard in this general election by voting on November 3rd. Thank you and stay healthy and safe.